Alrighty, good evening. Good evening. Alright, welcome. Alright, so welcome to our regular scheduled board of education meeting for Monday, January 13th, 2025. Stand for the biggest, the plan, the story. So we have four members here, Chris Reedy, so Robert, and that's the agents. Dr. Andel, the Santiago, and Clark, and that's all. We have one amendment to the agenda this evening is to create a consent calendar for items A through F. So essentially because it's a calendar and calling, uh, so calling the vote for each of the items, we can call one vote to vote on all of the vote business for, uh, this evening. And so with that being said, you have a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar. Who will amend us from our previous meetings, items A through F. Motion second, all the paper. Booms, eyes have it. Right, communication, just want to encourage our families at home to remember to, uh, register your child for kindergarten. It begins on February 1st, 2015, at our new location, which is located, um, at the Community Cultural Center here in East Hartford. So it's never too late, uh, to start the registration process for kindergartens and grades one through twelve. And I will turn it over to our student representatives for their updates.
Um, good evening. Um, for the Connecticut IP Academy's, um, representative updates. On January 8th, our International Baccalaureate Diploma Vicent ceremony was held. Twelve of our 2024 graduates were awarded with the International Baccalaureate Diploma. Eleven were able to attend, as well as some of our alumni from 2021 and 2017. The National Honor Society is hosting Cookies, Coke, and Creme, which will be held from January 17th to the 23rd in order to prepare our students for their exams. Our next recruiting open house is on January 15th, and our second to last before the end of the application acceptance period. Our students lead a PowerPoint created by Principal Marion, and we ensure each family gets a chance to discover all the students have to op- offer about the school by holding tours throughout the evening. Uh, the Student Advisory Board is hosting the Midwinter Festival on January 30th to celebrate the end of midterms and the beginning of second semester for our students. Our Parent Advisory Council meeting will be on February 5th at 6:00 PM. And over forty percent of 44 seniors have been accepted to one or more colleges, which are updated on the college thermometer weekly. As the end of college application season approaches, we are proud to announce that we have received over sev- more than seventy acceptances at this time. Our school was recognized on Fox 61 last month for its recognition of students' excellence. And some of our acceptances include Penn State, George Mason, UConn, Howard, and Alabama State. We've also congratulated two students on receiving full ride scholarships to Tuscany University.
Our updates for East Hartford High School, um, on December 19th and 20th, we held Crystal Bingo for people who are at honors in the first quarter. On January 7th and January 11th, FASFA, there was a FASFA event held by Miss Brown to help students apply for financial aid for college. And another event will be held on January 29th. Midterms are coming up, and they will be January 21st to the 27th. And Student Council is currently planning our Black History Month assembly, which will be held sometime in February.
For our student representatives. Thank you for that update. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to participate at this time? So dear East Hartford School Board, staff, families, and community, on behalf of the entire school board, I would like to extend a warm welcome back after a holiday break and happy new year. I hope everyone had a chance to relax, recharge, and spend quality time with loved ones. As we step into the new year, we look forward to the opportunities and challenges ahead. And I am confident that together we will continue to build on the progress we made. Your dedication to our students, our staff, and the community is truly appreciated. And your unwavering support help all of our schools thrive. So let's approach 2025 with optimism, collaboration, and renewed commitment to making this year one of the growth of success for everyone in East Hartford schools. Thank you. And turn it over to our student representative. Good evening. That would take a little longer because Ms. Byers is supposed to give a welcome. She had to go grab something, and here she is right now.
Thanks. Thank you. I was saying, I just sent this to you. As I'm sitting back there with my paper in my hand, I was like, hmm, I wonder if I'm going to see this. Sorry. If I can start, um, I'm really Byers, the principal here from the ECLC. Um, as we're all aware, we're an early childhood program of three and four-year-olds, um, with the new kindergarten entry date, sometimes five-year-olds. Um, our early learning experience in East Hartford supports all of our students so that they can develop the necessary academic and social emotional skills, um, to be successful student, um, and those are all done through a play-based learning. So just to tell you a little bit about who we are. Um, I know I presented before, and you hear all about our Head Start program. That's just a small little snippet of what we, um, you know, are about here. We have, um, funded programs through Head Start, School Readiness, and Smart Start. Those are either federal or state-funded programs. We have fourteen classrooms. In those classrooms, there's, um, eighteen students. You guys can go to the next slide, sorry. Eighteen students, one certified teacher, and a parent educator. We have a total of twenty classrooms. Our other special education classrooms have, we have four integrated half-day classrooms, which is really a total of eight classes, because we have students to come in the morning and students to come in the afternoon. We then also have two self-contained half-day classrooms, um, which ends up being four classrooms, because those students come in the morning and they come in the afternoon. On site in our building, we have three speech and language pathologists. We have a social worker. We have a behavior manager. We have our occupational and physical therapists that come in to provide support to students, um, that have been deemed eligible for that service. We have a resource teacher, and this year we also started an evaluation team. So we received so many referrals from the outside community that we have a team of this resource teacher and a speech patho- pathologist that take care of those referrals. Um, beyond the support for the students in the immediate building, we also have family support. So we have six family service coordinators. They provide support to our families for any needs that they have within their home. It could be helping them find internet service. It could be helping them find a job, um, learn job skills, um, find a new place to live. We have a coordinator of pre-K support services. We have a family and community outreach coordinator. They both play a huge role with helping with enrollment. So we, um, support families here in coordination with the, our Welcome Center, um, to help families with that enrollment process. Um, our family and community outreach coordinator supports our programs with all of our state funding, reporting system that we have to follow, as well as collection of our parent fees. Um, we have a family support specialist, and we also have a school-based health center on site, which is very helpful. Um, just to tell you a little bit about what we do. So we do have a pre-K curriculum. We use a curriculum called Creative Curriculum. Um, we also use Foundations and Haggerty. Those are two fin- phonics and phonological awareness programs that help children with those early learning skills, which are the same exact programs that are used in K, um, two. We use a second step, um, social emotional curriculum. Kids become familiar with that program here, and that's carried on through the elementary schools as well. This year, with our help of our WISK model, we have implemented a new, um, TE curriculum for our students. Um, so our teachers have been through training to receive support on how to provide more structured physical education activities for the students. Um, on top of that, we have a lot of extracurricular activities. One's going on right now is we contract with the Storytelling Association out of Con College. And then we also do programs with the Children's Museum. Um, the supports that we have in the building, we have, um, special, a special education. We have speech and language pathologists, social worker. We talked about, I talked about that a little bit before. Um, they do services within the classrooms, and they also pull up students for support. Um, we also provide services within the community. So we have a resource teacher and a speech and language pathologist that go out into the community programs, our school readiness programs, and provide support for students that have been deemed eligible. And then once a month here at our building, we do screenings for community. So any family that is concerned about their child and their development, they would come here for a screening to just see if the student is doing well, or if they need to move on to further support, um, through the IEP process. Um, we do, uh, also support the Sparkler program, which I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with that, but that's part of the state program to childfind. So if we have children that, um, have been, parents are concerned, and they're evaluated, and they don't qualify, we're pr- we're required as a school to provide information on a monthly basis to that family so that they can keep up and see, you know, how their child is doing and if they need some support. Um, in the term, in the area of family engagement, we have monthly family cont- our family service coordinators provide monthly contacts to our families, check in, they do goal setting, and see what type of support the family does need. Um, we do parent workshops. We have at least two to three workshops every month. Um, one of our, our actuals, um, school coach, Kathy Miranda, provides literacy nights to our families, which is held once a month virtually. Um, as I said, we also do a lot of support, uh, registration support for our families. So it's, it's a very cumbersome process to start, and families aren't familiar, especially if they haven't had any other children in the school district. So they, um, we provide that support as well. And then we also have Friday monthly coffee hours, which have a focus to them, but then also it's just a time for families to come in and talk and talk to each other, kind of real, you know, talk about what they all are experiencing and, and get support from each other. Um, just a little few points of pride. We actually are, um, a pyramid model school. The state of Connecticut has a pyramid model program, which is a framework of, um, evidence-based practices to promote children for healthy and social emotional development. So we, um, work with our students on the different tiered approaches to support. One of the areas that is our main, main focus is to make sure children are developing those social emotional skills. If they don't have that social emotional development, they cannot then participate in the accessing their academics. So that is a major, um, focus in our school. We also provide active parenting curriculum series for our parents. So we provide a, um, we did one already this year. It was four different sessions, one in the morning, one in the evening. Our family service coordinators provide those sessions. They've been trained on how to provide that for the families. Um, helps with parenting styles, preventing problems, encouraging positive behaviors, and just talking about bless you, about overall school success. Um, we also coordinate a big portion of our, we have three hundred and fifty students currently in our building. Probably will top off at probably about four hundred by the end of the year. Um, we have students starting new every day. Um, students that are coming in through the birth to three process or through our community referrals. So we collaborate with the birth to three agencies to coordinate that transition between services provided to infants and toddlers from birth to three. Um, we talk about, we see them in the preschool environment, um, ensure a smooth transition for children. This is typically the first contact that some of our families have had with the East Hartford Public Schools. So this is where we make sure that we are providing them with, um, all of the necessary components of what, what we're all about and how we can help their child and family. Um, just to give you an idea of those numbers, we received a hundred and forty-nine referrals last year between January and December. We currently service a hundred and sixty-six special education students that are attending school here. So all of the supports that we have right in the building were a very unique program in the state. I attend meetings within Head Start, School Readiness, Smart Start, and we are very unique in the sense that all of our programs are within the one building, which really helps our families because everything is, is all, um, cohesively supported and provided for them. That is all about us. Any questions?
I do have one question.
Sure.
When you say a community referral, what does that look like? Where are those referrals coming from? I'm just curious. A hundred and forty-nine, where did, how, where are they coming?
So some of those are coming from student, from children that are in birth to three. So if they are in birth to three, a requirement of the birth to three program is to reach out to the school district of the town that that child lives in within ninety days before the child is turning three. That's when we hold the tran- they, birth to three holds a transition meeting, and we hold our first PPT placement meeting. That's when we learn about the child, what are their needs? How can we, um, support the child within our program? At that point, we will then evaluate the child in all areas of their, uh, development, as well as have them come in for a classroom observation. We then meet to discuss that evaluation to see if they would receive services here in our building or what that would look like. Some of those referrals also come from parents. So we do childfind. So within that Sparkler app, parents are going on and doing ages and stages if there's a concern. I will get an email that I need to reach out to that family to let them know what the next steps in that process would be. Um, we work closely with our school readiness program, so the YM, the YW, Silvas, um, Swaddle Joy. And if they have concerns, they let families know who to reach out to. And Caitlin McDonald, our assistant principal, is the contact for that. So that's the, um, she takes in all of that information, and it's, it's called a community referral at that point until the child has become part of our process. You know, the process is completed, and they become one of our students.
Could you explain the Sparkler program, good?
Sure. So the Sparkler, it's an initiative with the state of Connecticut and the Office of Early Childhood about three years ago. So the, um, we, we are required by law as a school district, um, and Craig received some of this information in his department as well. So we are required to, um, reach out to families that have, um, the Sparkler app is, um, on 211. So if a family reaches out to 211, they'll go right to the Sparkler app. The parent can complete in ages and stages. That looks at all areas of their development. It's like a quick parent questionnaire. Once the parent completes that questionnaire, I automatically get an email letting me know that I need to reach out to the family. Um, it's kind of a, um, a tracking system so that students, um, that we can continually, continually follow students. We here have to track all of our students that come in to our building through the state, um, system, and we provide the state with information. And if we, if they exit our program, then they want to know where they are to make sure that they can catch them and provide services for them until they get to kindergarten. And then if a child comes in through the process and is evaluated and does not qualify, we, as a, um, school district, are required to reach out to that family within six months to make sure that they, um, don't have any further concerns, and they do in ages and stages again to see if there needs to be another referral at that point. Welcome.
Thank you very much. So it's a good, it's a good tie-in in terms of being able to see, because we know we have a young man here who's a senior. So as we look at entering the district, so we also have to remember, it's, it's a community meeting, so it's more than just those of us that are here. So being able to be here at ECLC today, getting a full, a more comprehensive understanding of what happens here, and different type of things in terms of these students coming at the earliest age, trying to get a really senior, so people get that over-styled. And as we get to the next piece. Always list our goals. Like I said, I think it's always important to remember, you know, who we are, what we're here for, and it's always trying to, it's not going for the next one. Yeah, good. So we're going to cover a few things tonight, our staff recognition, our normal employee spotlight, highlighting what staff, just a recognition altogether, because like I said, we have the young man here tonight as well. We'll close out with some general updates and our capital plan update at the end. So we know we recognize some of our staff in the December meeting, but Mr. Ryan Joubert wasn't able to be here. So I'm going to take a moment to recognize him this evening, and Mr. Farno, if you want to come up and say some words tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again. Uh, but it's always such a pleasure when we get to really honor people that really put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into their teaching and for students at the forefront, right? Yeah. Mr. Joubert is one of our teachers at Goodwin Elementary School. And he has been, um, honored at the state level for adaptive teacher of the year, and all of his work that he's done around that. And, oh, he really does, um, I think he really sets an inclusive environment for all of his students. He's also, you know, just a great, um, teacher all around. One of the things that he's working on, and I guess it's all right to like kind of talk about this, but we've never done this before. He's working with our social life department and the University of Hartford. So this is the first year that we're going to actually do Adaptive Field Day, um, for all of our, um, K, um, five schools. And so that's something that he's working on, and just providing a different experience for kids that can really, um, access just the very little things. And so, um, I am really very proud of the work that he does on behalf of our students. And so it's really a great, right, pleasure. It's an honor to be here this episode.
Thank you. Um, it really is an honor, and, um, I really want to thank Tracy for all of her support because, you know, I've been teaching for thirteen years, and, um, since I came to East Hartford three years ago, I've just had the most growth at this point. Not just, um, not just that I've been in a new place, but Tracy offers me the best opportunities, whether it's, um, we have open phys ed, um, professional go- where they come to us, uh, they can't silverland for ECLC, um, just to kind of give them some ideas of what they can do. Um, I got to go to some great conferences. If there's anything that I have like a weakness in, which there's a lot of areas that I can grow, uh, she lets me out, hey, I know this guy, and I know this girl, and they're really strong in the same, so I'm going to have you meet up with them. Um, any equipment that I need, um, she's quick to help me find it and get a, get ahold of it. So it really allows me to give the most of my kids, uh, with her support. So I really appreciate that. Um, and, uh, I'm really proud to be like a part of East Hartford recognition, uh, just to make sure that all of our students, regardless of their abilities, really have not only the chance to be included, but to really receive the best, like, physical education program that they can. So, thank you.
And on behalf of Congressman Larson, I have small recognition, recognition of making adaptive physical education teacher of the year, so certificate commercial recognition presented to you, Ryan. And just one other point that I'll make, and regarding the program itself. So our under Tracy Stefano's leadership, the state has recognized the physical education program in East Hartford as a whole. And it recognizes the unique and innovative program to support the health and wellbeing of our students. And what I wanted to do just quickly, because we're also, we shared this in a few other, a few other meetings ago. We're in a partnership with the University of Connecticut, with UConn. And, and everyone uses the acronym WISK, but it's a whole school, whole community, whole child. And just taking a moment to highlight what the focus of the program is. And I think we are one of very few school systems across the country, one of twenty school systems across the country that are participating in this. The University of Connecticut, with us, there is a substantial grant that's used to provide a lot of resources and support with that. But just making sure when we think about it, it's not just the children, it's what we're doing with them during the day. Influence that they can have in pa- with parents overall, and sometimes it's about forcing mom or dad, who you live with, to do the right thing as far as being healthy, eating right, and those type of things. But the overall focus of the program is to ensure every student is healthy and successful, to nurture the physical, social, and emotional health. And so if we tie it to some of the things that Aspires was mentioning about what they do with the younger students here, there is that food line, there is that trajectory that we need to have to be a healthier community and overall society. And a couple of other points in terms of emphasizing the connection between students, their health, and their academic achievement. We know that, we talk about the importance of eating at the right time. The people can debate to say whether breakfast is the most important meal, which you still need to eat, whether you think that's the most important meal or not. But really getting into how are we recognizing that the wellbeing is multifaceted, including physical, emotional, social, behavioral health? And how are we touching with our own families and building those other connections? And just one other thing, a lot of work that's been done over the, over the past year and a half with the partnership with the Park and Rex Department, and I help the department here, or, uh, Physical Education Department here as far as being able to build an intermural program for elementary, for students in elementary school. Personally, I believe that every child, every person, at some point, should belong to some sort of team, whether it's going to be an athletic team, or if you're going to play music, something where we learn how to better collaborate, cooperate with others. Strictly speaking of this, being a part of a team, when you're learning how to be more physically active, is crucially important. So with Tracy's work and also with our Park and Rex, um, director, there's been a lot of work on that throughout the, the last year and a half. So again, I would thank you for all of your work, and good luck for being here this evening. Okay, so our next piece, and you're free to go do all of your homework and take care of things, but it's funny that you were here last year. So we continue to do, you know, use that word awesome. I don't use it much, but this is an awesome experience to be able to invite you back. Again, any opportunity we have to invite students to be here, especially for what you're achieving. So I'm thinking I'm going to invite up Mr. Cleveland, or Mr. Sebitt, where to go, and they'll do all the talking about you.
Good evening, everyone. This is truly an honor to, um, being asked to speak tonight, but maybe, um, like, it's truly an honor to get a chance to talk about something I truly care about. Um, Draven is a generational player, two-way player that all coaches would dream of having, and I was blessed to have coached him. Draven and I started working about two summers ago, one to his junior year. Um, we sat down, went over the playbook, so that we could figure out what's best fits his style of play, and what can really get the, the state to notice who he was at the play. The mission was to do something special last preseason at East Hartford. Draven had numerous opportunities to walk away, many coaches around the state wandered down, touched food, but he decided to stay home. He wanted to finish where he started. Draven's commitment to staying was a strong and, um, heartfelt mission that, um, best fits- Draven's commitment to staying was a strong and heartfelt mission that best fits what we wanted to do and how we wanted to bring East Hartford High School to the next level as a football team and as a community. With two seasons and 20 games, Draven and I had to figure out the fastest way to make it his first two years as an athlete to a quarterback that we both knew he was capable of being. We also agreed that the fastest way was to let him beat Drake with no restrictions. We stood together, what comes, we stood together for what comes our way, for what would have come our way, good or bad. The junior year, we fell short for the playoff, but Draven made Allstate Elite, second team, Walter Camp, second team quarterback. Two of the highest awards, two of the highest awards that we have in the state of football. Our next season, we took on one of the hardest captains in the state and Draven took that task. We went Allstate Elite for the second year in a row, but this time we went Walter Camp, first team, first quarterback. There are things that Draven does as a captain and as the role model that a lot of people don't see. So if you think of Drake Roberts, you think of all the touchdowns, the last miss, the highlights, anybody's talking about Draven as the best quarterback in state. But what you don't see is what goes on in the classroom in school. Draven has a 3.5 for the years in a row. Draven also is not in the hallways, he's in class. When Draven sees other underclassmen in the hallways, he's first to tell them, quarter class, get a view of them. Or he'd bring them by my office and we would talk to the students on how to be better student athletes. So there's a lot of things that goes on in the school that a lot of people don't see that's not really there. To have Coach Draven for two years, and a lot of people think that two years is a long time, but in football, two years is only six months. So to put something together in six months and to achieve what you achieved in six months is great. A lot of people never thought of Draven as a quarterback, they always thought of him as an athlete. But the last two years, we showed everybody that Drake Roberts is a quarterback, he will go to the next level as a quarterback. And to be invited as a Walter Camp quarterback, not athlete, showed them that everything that he strives for in college, he accomplishes in the classroom, he accomplishes on the field, he's a leader in the locker room. And he's just like so important to our program that the younger players look up to. So now when you have a student athlete right there, he's not just excelling on the field, and he's the man to everyone to get better grades. We even sat down and talked about raising our standards as a football team, raising our G P and priorities to be on. So Draven has helped me grow as a coach. I hope I helped him grow as a player. And I know we didn't reach our goals of playoff and championship, but sometimes your success comes from failure. And I think we never had a bad season. We had a few bad moments that led us to where we are tonight. So as Drake Roberts, last high school coach, as a friend, as a family member, as a coach, I'm looking forward to see where he's going to the next level. He will be in the stands. We will hear moms, good or bad, we love moms. And my son will be there, I'm pretty sure, St. Joshua will be there, and we'll go to the next level.
First things first, I want to give all my, all my glory to God, 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 be here, I want to be in this position. I just want to thank God for being able to bless me to be here. I want to thank the world that grabbed me and gave me this recognition. It means a lot to me. I have plenty of sleepless nights trying to get to that Walter Camp first team. And then say right when we get in the second team, and then say right when we might get in first team as a quarterback. So being able to achieve what I achieve is truly a blessing. I just want to thank you all for having here and thank you, God, for giving me this opportunity.
And we always have something. We always have something. So just recognition, word, East Hartford Board of Education, recognize and congratulate Drake Roberts for his continued outstanding achievements on and off the field. Allstate Elite Type 12 football. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, and our meeting is going to continue. We see the room configuration is a little bit different. So if you, there you go. I think it's, like I said, it goes without saying, being able to, and that is something that we should take the looks on in private, being able to invite our students in. It's a great opportunity. We have a student who has earned this level of success, but that's not just what it's about. Really being able to recognize students at all levels, having a community, it's a reminder in my role in terms of, you know, it's in the high school today. You get to see everyone in their normal, and you see like these are the different type of things that we do and what we're able to see as far as what the level of progress is for our, for our students. But we'll get back to the staff recognition part. And the first employee spotlight is Mackenzie Mace, biology teacher at Connecticut International Baccalaureate Academy, SoCal. And as it pulls up, I always want to try to take the opportunity too, because Laura Roberts does a very good job putting these videos together for us and recognizing staff.
I'm Mackenzie Mace, I'm a biology teacher. I was actually a student K through 12 in East Hartford. So I've been in East Hartford for a very long time, but for SoCal, all five years of my teaching career so far. I teach 11th and 12th grade, so usually it's more advanced than biology that is taught here. We're teaching at the higher levels. Usually we're doing a lot of hands-on stuff, so we do a lot of labs, a lot of modeling, making it so that students are working with real-world scientific phenomena. Very focused on not just like memorizing the content for the exam, but also how they can apply it to their real-world situations. And their futures, even if they don't want to become a evolutionary biologist or a doctor.
Mackenzie brings a lot of enthusiasm to the classroom. She loves it. So I think that's why she's really good at it. She enjoys working with students and getting them to meet high expectations in the classroom. She's also a team player, so she is great with other staff pitching in where we need a professional development. Anytime that we need her, she's there.
The staff here is very much like a family, so because it's such a smaller staff, we know who we can turn to. We can turn to everybody for help. So it's very, a close-knit community, and that even translates to the students where, even though I only teach 11th and 12th grade, I know a lot of the freshmen and sophomores already, even though I've never had a class with them. And we create these relationships with the students that that's what really matters, is like creating that relationship with them so that you can help them succeed and help them to reach that next goal.
Good, thank you, and we will.
I'm Alexis St. Croix, and I'm a special interest pathologist and an assistive technology specialist. I came to pick and I, this will be my fourth year here, so we're working with communication disorders and needs across the entire school. When you're around her, you're going to see just an incredibly enriched positive learning environment where she is meeting the needs of all of the kids in the diverse group of kids that she's working with. So everything is always differentiated based on their IEP goals, based on where their needs are. She's just incredible. That's why it keeps the job so fun and there's never a boring day because you literally are working with so many different students and doing so many different things. So you might do language-based support, of course, building vocabulary, building sentence structure skills. And then, of course, we do do some speech articulation, remediate some speech sound errors, also working on integrating like literacy with that. And then, and some of the more complex communication kind of needs, we're working with a lot of assistive technology, either like iPads or things like that, or even low-tech, just using like sign language, using visual support. She is an expert with the assistive technology. She goes above and beyond. She will collaborate with universities to help create different assistive technology tools for students. Last year she had, for one of our kids, created a tool that they could machine where he could throw a football at recess and actually play with kids. It was incredible. The goal is just to really, to build their independence and to see students like gain that independence and that confidence when they've gained those skills that they know that they've been working on is really, it's just such a celebration for everybody.
Thank you. And again, I know we do this every month and it seems to be routine, but it doesn't go without saying, being able to recognize and just emphasizing again, we have almost 1,300 staff. And we know that there are so many people that are doing tremendous things in all of the classrooms. And the way these are set up today, it actually gives you a glimpse into the room to see some of the activities that are being done hands-on, so we definitely appreciate that. Yeah, we can go back. And as we switch to the next piece, it's our legislative priorities. So again, I'm not reading all of these slides to you. There's about four slides. We added the information on there. I put it on there, as I said before, because it becomes a public document. Individuals can go back and see exactly what's there. What I wanted to do is just highlight a couple of points as we get into this. We know that the legislators have started those sessions. I was in a legislative meeting earlier today. It's just interesting, there's not enough time to stay on top of the things that they do. That's why it's their full-time job for some of them and part-time jobs for others. But what I wanted to just touch on in terms of where our priorities are, so what we do, this builds each year. Some of the priorities have been the same for the past few years. And coming in last year, I just adopted some of what the previous superintendent Rene had in place, working with our, working with our legislative officials that support East Hartford. And again, just highlighting the, what I put on here, so the objective one, we're thinking about, you know, what the delegation is doing, really focusing on having a, you know, it's true, I said, based on previous efforts, mainly HB 5283, the Hartford Public Schools asks the Hartford delegation to actively work to regain the interest and support of the Connecticut legislator in the 2025 session to pass a student-centered funding system. All that means is having a funding system that is truly reflective of all communities. You know, some communities where the tax base is the main contributor to the funding of the schools, but we also know that now all communities have the same level of tax base. So that, that's one that just highlights that to get the state to look at it a little bit differently and hopefully pay attention as far as how they are calculating how it works. And the next one I was touching on quickly, so I can touch on that one. This one just gets into our, where our special education excess cost ran. And again, what this is, we do the best that we can in terms of serving, financially serving all of our students who need special education services. But we also have to receive that level of funding when it's beyond what the town or city can actually afford. And we're similar to some of our other districts and other like districts, so we're all kind of pushing for the same thing to ensure that when we look at the state level and when those costs exceed a certain level, the state will have that formula to be able to better support us and reaching out and trying to do that. And the last one is just a student center formula. It goes right along with that, as I was previously saying, with the fully funded pre-kindergarten. So we're here at ECLC today and talking about the four-year-olds and addressing the gap. But it is something that the earliest we can get students in school where, again, it's pre-kindergarten, it's not pre-school. When they are here, they're pre-K, this is school. And not all communities have an ECLC, and not all communities, including us, are tapping into. We know that our need is high. So what we're doing as we work to see what is the demand and making sure individuals know that, you know, you have access to this. And we know that there are, there are waiting lists, so we want to be able to tap into the waiting list and make sure that all of our families in East Hartford have access to it, where we can tap into that waiting list however we can, that'll take some support from those state legislators to help fully fund this area. And just another common one, we talk about the teacher recruitment and retention. What we need to start, what we started shifting, I adopted the same language, but what we started shifting is how do we retain our high-quality teachers or staff, period? So we're not always having to do recruitment, but we know that recruitment is ongoing because there are people who leave the profession, individuals move to other places. We have individuals that retire. So there are lots that's there, so it's a workforce that's constantly, there is that level of turnover. And I went through a little bit quickly, but we'll have the complete list, you know, that, that'll be posted as we get ready for our legislative meeting. Where our legislator is, and I believe it's about two weeks on January 27th, we'll dig deeper into this with those elected officials just so they know what East Hartford is, you know, what we prioritize, what we value. Like I said, it's been building for years. Some get addressed, but obviously none of them have it fully addressed because we would be able to add something else to the list and relook at. Any question, comment on that one before I go to the next?
So the fully fund pre-K, how will that work for the parents of East Hartford? Because I know for, I have to pay for my son to come here. How does that work if it's fully funded? Because I know we have to pay for certain criteria. So will those criteria change if it gets fully funded and where do these, where do parents stand if it does?
Now, it's a good question. So when we think about the parent contribution, because a lot of it is grant-funded. And so what we would be looking at, like I don't have a 100, I don't have a clear answer for you beyond the fact that that's part of what we're pushing for to have it where parents that are on the waitlist will have that level of access. But it still means we have to have the funding to include the others that are there. But because of the federal guidelines, because some of the ECLC funding is funded through the federal, the federal guidelines, there's a sliding scale and those type of things. But thinking of something a little bit differently, this is why when we talk about the potential of replicating ECLC, but I'm not quite sure if we want to replicate ECLC under the same structure, because then we have to follow some of those other guidelines. What we're looking at for our community is how do we open up something else, when they say replicate, just serving the students? But we have to figure out what that funding stream will be. And so that's where these conversations really tap into it because the more grant funding that we receive, that's great, but there are also a lot of rules that we have to follow, which makes it a little bit challenging sometimes. Yeah. The, the funding, yeah.
If you have more students, how many would the other students have?
Exactly, exactly. So all of that would be worked out. There would still be some sharing space in that sense, but just looking at what those federal guidelines are, that's really what holds us to, to that priority. Okay, and the next piece is, so this is, we're going to have a couple of reminders, but I just wanted to highlight this part because the Rotary Club did a tremendous job. They donated over 1,000 dictionaries to our third and fifth graders in all of our elementary schools. And they don't really ask for any highlighting, but I needed to, we needed to highlight them because it's something that they didn't have to do. And they have their monthly meetings, so if anyone has an opportunity one day to be able to go to their meeting, well, not everyone, but probably shouldn't have invited everyone to the meetings, but they, they, they do, they do it on a monthly basis where they do cover a lot of priorities for their community. But I definitely want to take an opportunity and share that. And it ties into, when we focus on literacy and having students have a dictionary in hand, because we've gotten so far away from having books all the time versus using devices. because we've gotten so far away from having books all the time versus using devices. But having that student have a dictionary and being able to experience going back through and finding out what words are and forcing you to kind of tap into those skills is a tremendous thing as well. Couple of other pieces I wanted to highlight in terms of reminder, just reminding about school calendar. We know that next Monday, there is no school. So it's Martin Luther King Day next Monday. And just in thinking of that, when we think about all the struggles that we're going through in terms of some of the national, we can call it a national disaster, and thinking of the forest fires that were happening in California, keeping people in our thoughts and really figuring out how we can support, better support them. When we think about what Martin Luther King Day, it's really a day of service versus thinking it's just a regular day off when you're sleeping. But I did want to, you know, say something in his words where, since an individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity. And it's how are we thinking of others beyond the fact of saying we feel bad? But what are we actually doing? And also, I wanted to just touch on this outside, he's just before in a graduation speech. In October, October 26, 1967, about six months before Martin Luther King was assassinated, he spoke to some junior high school students and kind of shared this thought. He asked them a question. He said, "I want to ask you a question, and that is, what is your life's blueprint? Whenever a building is constructed, you usually have an architect who draws a blueprint. That blueprint serves as the pattern, as the guide in a building, because a building is not well-erected without a good, solid blueprint. Now, each of you in this process of building the structure of your lives, and the question is whether you have a powerful, a solid and sound blueprint." So again, as we go through things and we continue to think about the sphere of influence on those around us, being able to take some time and really recognize the challenges that we have in different communities and how people come together and really think about how we can cultivate. Talking here as far as those four, those three-year-olds and those four-year-olds and getting into kindergarten, how are we making sure for the legislative priorities that we're kind of on the same page? Because you know that there's always something that has to give. And as the legislators are going to be working on our behalf, it's not about taking from some other community to give to us. It's about how are we spreading it out and making sure we're showing ownership from that point. Another point, because this was everywhere, and again, it's not to share too much of what we're doing about it because we can't, but the cybersecurity issue dealing with Power School, before we sent a statement out to all of our families, I actually received one. You know, I'm on the list, sir, for one of the schools that our children were going, was going to, and it's taken forever to get office, and I get to see the information as it, as it comes out. But it's impacted across the country. At first, we couldn't tell how big it was, but it's a huge, it's a huge piece that has definitely, that has definitely come out. And our team has been doing a very good job staying in touch with Power School, thinking about the necessary steps, and we have spelled that out before. And I will share the number because she put it on, but our chief information officer, Roberta Pratt, had, if there are any questions, we saw a couple of questions from some things. Just, you know, if there are confused about something, if there's something you're a little nervous about the information, feel free to reach out to make sure that we can be as supportive as we can. But making sure, I just want to reiterate it tonight, because making sure that families understand that it wasn't something that our team didn't have in place, it was through a vendor. And that doesn't make it any better, so the speakers want to know that they've been working tremendously to make sure we can block those type of things from being able to happen, you know, across the board. So the phone number for the chief information officer, if there are any questions that may need to be put out there, is 860-622-5150. And my next point, I asked her before if she was sure, so she said yes. And my next, my next point is, before I invite out Mr. Lavezzi to cover, I wanted to just touch on, so Jim Ravezzi will be going over our five-year capital improvement plan. And I know we have a facilities subcommittee meeting earlier to kind of go over those things. And I am definitely appreciative as far as our long-term plan. Because we also have a 30-year plan. And we know the town has a 30-year plan also. So seeing where the connections and the tie-ins are to those. I think it's always important just to highlight for the, for the community because when you see this as a standalone, when you see the large numbers that are there, when you think about the overall investment in our facilities and what's needed, it ends up being a small share when you think about the local share when the state grant program is about 76% to 77% reimbursement. So which means that we're only paying, is that about 23%, 22% of the overall cost. And we just wanted individuals to kind of remember that as you're seeing it, but also looking at the buildings that we have, and they're, they're in great shape. But we're looking at how do we modernize? How do we scale up? How do we make sure, you know, there's a lot of work with the roofs and windows and doors and those type of things? So when Jim will come up there with some projects that we will, and he'll highlight. But again, the board has a full listing of all the projects coming up and just being able to see some of the highlights that are there over the course of the, over the next few years. So, and he'll come up in a few minutes, so I'm handing that over to the board chair.
Are there any questions for the superintendents?
Great. Any questions for the superintendents? All right, there is no openness, we're going to turn it over to new business. So do I have a motion to appoint Vanessa Jenkins as our board education secretary, replacing Mr. Happy Goodness? I have a motion on the second. Motion's in all that favor? Please, any discussions? All right, so congratulations, Ms. Jenkins. I will not be here February, March, April, or May. And I will give you a full list of congratulations and speak acts of honor. Speech is full, but thank you, Vanessa, for just stepping up and agreeing to, you know, engage in this process of being our next secretary. So thank you. All right, with that being said, I'll now turn the floor over to Jim. Um, sorry. Oh, okay, perfect, sorry. Turn this one over to you, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Um, yes, mine is very quick. So I am excited to announce that East Hartford was one of the chosen recipients of the CT grown for CT grant. And the grant amounted to $74,780. And the fund will help the district farm-to-school program. This program reaches students through the garden experience and will continue to expand access and locally grown foods in the, you know, the $74,780 will be allocated to salaries, equipment, advertising, materials and supplies, professional development, and field services.
For, seriously, I'd be excited to prove this to me as I, as we all know, that was their nutritional program, their farm-to-school piece, particularly at some of our elementary schools with a passion for nutrition. So our district, their wellness community. So, that being said, are there any questions to you? Look, there is a motion to approve our current application this evening. A motion on the second? All in favor? Any questions? All right, so.
Thank you.
And Jim, glory is yours for our District Y 26, FY 30 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, committee members, thank you, audience. I'm pleased to be here today to present an overview, a brief overview of our capital FY 26, FY 30 capital plan. Uh, just a few pointers. Um, it is a daunting list. As you can see, there's 90 projects on the list over the next five years. We added 14 projects on this specific five-year period. Uh, projects, once they are funded, they go off the list. So the list that we're working on, I was starting to, starting from FY 26. FY 25's projects were approved, and those are in the process of being funded and being designed at this point. So let me make a few points concerning the, just the capital presentation and plan itself. Uh, this provides a refreshed annualized blueprint for sustaining improvements for the district's infrastructure and buildings. Uh, buildings last longer when they are maintained through a planned maintenance cycle program. Number two, uh, this prepares for anticipated capital repairs and replacement of vital equipment and systems before it reaches its useful life to prevent untimely breakdown resulting costs, which are expensive at times or caused by the lack of planning, which we all try to avoid. A strategic approach to addressing the changing needs of the district, we're updating the five-year plan annually. Based on needs and changing priorities, projects are placed on the appropriate year as new projects are added. CIP plan is the developing conjunction of principles. So this is now a design, a backup type of program. So we incorporate a lot of changes, a lot of the additional projects with schools. Uh, some of their priorities, one of their program needs, one of their curriculum needs, all comes into play when it comes to developing a proper CIP plan for the next five years. Again, this is the blueprint for our financial planning as well. Uh, we need to know what our, what our costs are, our pocket costs, as well as what the state and federal funding will be available for proper planning. Obviously, we have, we have a capital reserve budget that we use to, we'll subsidize a lot of these projects through the local share and through the entire amount if there is no local share grants to be had. But we try awful hard to find the grants to appropriate some of these projects. One important aspect of the CIP plan is to make it available to state and federal grants. State grants especially are looking, will be looking for projects to be, to fund and obey what will be required as we have our five-year plan with those projects incorporated. So let's say you have a parking lot or a payment project grant from the line of from the state to come up, for instance, we have projects in there for payment. So all we can do is we pull those projects out of the five-year plan, and the state will approve those because those were improved projects by a little bit more. So just some of the reasons why we need a five-year capital plan as opposed to not having a plan. Uh, projects that remain in the plan for five years until they're funded, then they move out and move, and we're basically doing projects and incorporating, which is the reason why we're here today. I'm not here to bore with all the 90 different projects that would be adopted in class. I don't think you want to listen to me preach all evening. So I wanted to just touch base on some of the, some of the, some of the major projects that we have, some of the reasons why we need those. As you can see, on the top of the actual five-year project list, there are two major projects. One being a new school, which is outlined on the top line in gold. I love that's orange. That is an undefined name school. Uh, our buildings, believe it or not, are, the average age of our school, elementary size, is 69 years. So that's over half a century. So we have some older schools. Superintendent Thomas said they are very, very well-maintained. But again, they're aging. If you can take a look at this room, you know, we have, we have brick walls, we have a brand-new ceiling, flooring is new, but again, the walls and other structures are older. Um, we need to develop a school that replaces a school. I don't have some ideas, but we need to start looking at planning out school replacements. Other districts, surrounding districts have done that really successfully. Uh, and the reasons, uh, these schools weren't built with modernization, really 50, 60, 70 abilities. They weren't built for safety, although we do have safety elements in our schools. To build a school, a safe school requires sometimes new building. So we're going, so we have, uh, we have a program to look at, existing schools, to figure out which buildings we need to replace on a frequency basis. So the idea would be to choose that school for replacement, find the, find the land for, whether it be existing land or acquiring land through the town resources, using that old school as a swing space to develop new schools or to redesign or build, uh, called renovated new structures. So I'm thinking of existing building and renovating it like a new building. Second, a second item is for the, second project is for renovating the new high school. Uh, but again, high school is built in 1862. Many of the surfaces, many of the infrastructure systems alike are original to the building. So it would be a must to take a look at that entirely in the renovated new project. Then, again, all these, these two projects I'm referring to are going to be bonded projects. So the state does have a percentage of reimbursement for us, whether it be 66%, it's 76.42%, depending on what they determine is reimbursement. And then we would have to offer bond, the state, this would be a referendum, a vote on the town, on the next election cycle. Uh, so there is some homework to do before that. So I'm, you know, right now, I'm not prepared to talk about the specifics of, you know, what school we want to build or what type of, you know, what type of architecture we want. This is just really a game plan for looking at the future, for keeping East Hartford Public Schools current, keeping us to keep up, not, not even keep up the pace, but just to keep our children in town, to keep, to keep our population. We want, we want good schools, we have great schools. We want to continue on with that great expectation of providing the, the four billion and to look at modernizing, as Superintendent said, we want to keep, we want to keep up the pace. So basically, that's just kind of an overview of what we're doing as far as these projects are concerned. Again, once you have approved these projects, this five-year plan, we will post these on our website. So you can take a look at all of the projects. And each project will have individual touch sheet to break down project costs, break down, break down stop, so you can take a look at those in detail, you know, patrolling. So, um, basically, that's the overview of the five-year plan. Again, this is something we, we do every year to update and to maintain our facilities, infrastructure. Well, again, just to emphasize, we have not only facilities projects in there, if you've noticed, but we also have food services, food services capital, as well as, excuse me, fine arts and IT as well. So if you have any questions, general questions on that, please, we can open up the audience at night. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Jim? All right. All right, so as Jim referenced earlier, the facilities committee with me went over this plan in detail. Again, this is just a project plan for our capital improvement plan. So one of the examples we provided is important for us to prove this because let's say that there's a grant out there for IT. We already approved our capital improvement plan. Let's say that we're going to, you know, purchase servers or update the wheel wall. There's a grant out there, we approved this, it's part of our five-year strategic plan. Now, this gives, you know, Jim and Roberta, we're going to go ahead and apply for that grant and start this, so on and so on. So that's the whole purpose of really us approving this concept of a plan of projects that we want to fund in the future. There's no funding source right now, but this gives us a lot of grants when anything goes online. We can see a lot of it.
That's a good point, correct. There's no funding at this point, on these projects. But when funding does become available, projects get completed, we'll got this.
Very, thank you.
Um, shall I read the action?
Sure. It's up to you.
Okay, well, I'm, I don't have to read.
All right, perfect. So with that being said, the motion to approve our FY 26 and FY 30 capital. I want you to second all the favor. All right, so, thank you, thank you. I look forward to taking off East Hartford High and school building once it's completed. Also, are there any questions or concerns by board members? Any topics for future changes? All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Motion's all in favor? Please, especially, all right, so. Thank you, everyone.